Good evening, students, parents, staff, administration, board members. I would like to now reconvene to the regular Board of Education meeting. With that being said, can I get a motion to reconvene to the regular Board of Education?
Don't move.
Jenny, please call the board.
Mr. Alexander, absent, Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. O'Kofo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson? Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valteras?
Aye.
Ms. Barman?
Aye.
Motion carried. We are in open session at 7:30 P.
Please stand with the Pledge of Allegiance. Jenny, please read the petition.
Through expectations of excellence and by providing equitable educational opportunities to empower each student, our graduates are prepared for college careers and to serve as contributing members of a dynamic global society.
Thank you, Jenny. At this time, the Board of Education opens the floor for public comment. The board will receive public comment from any individual present this evening and have submitted a request to address the board per the established procedures. Comments will be limited to three minutes in accordance with Board Policy 2230 unless you ask for an extension of five minutes. We believe that all participants in the meeting desire the best outcomes for our students, families, and communities. As a reminder, this meeting is being livestreamed and will also be archived and available on the district website.
Mayor Nathaniel Booker? Step down, you'll be right there. Ray Williams?
I'm President Valteras, Board of Education, parents, staff, friends, family. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Trustee Ray Williams from the village of Maywood. And I stand here today with the Butler Homes family and their resolve and what they're trying to get accomplished here today. Also stand with the class of 1996, my class here of Proviso East, as I am a Proviso East alumna. I stand on behalf of our friend, our sister, our family member, Tammy Butler Holmes. Tammy Holmes, when she walked the halls of Proviso East, she emphasized everything great about Proviso East. Everything that Proviso East was trying to do, everything that Proviso East was trying to instill in students, the greatness that Proviso East was trying to instill. In essence, she was everything that I wasn't when we walked the halls here of Proviso East, and my classmates can attest to that. But Tammy was a visionary even when we were in school. She always wanted to be first in everything. And we had many arguments and many battles about things that she was first at. Her elementary school was the best school, Emerson School. We're not going there today. Biology honors, she had to be at the top of the class, which I gave her that as well. I told her there was gonna be something that I was gonna beat you at, but she even beat us leaving this earth. And we're gonna celebrate her life here today. We come to celebrate her life here today. But we come also to ask the board to assist us in a resolution. And I'm excited about the prospect of walking in Proviso East one day and seeing a hall, a classroom, a science room, or something dedicated to the memory of Tammy Butler Holmes. Because that's what she was to us. Her legacy will live on. And I'm hoping that we can say to Chicago, her legacy is gonna live on here in the village of Maywood and here in Proviso, in Proviso East High School, where she got her start and where she walked these halls. When I was in my senior year in high school, I was president of the Prestige Club. It was the Provisos in Dallas to strengthen ties and increase greater ethnic awareness. It wasn't because I was some great student. It wasn't because I was smart. It was because of people like Tammy Butler, and we argue about this all the time and joke about it. I was tricked into joining the Prestige Club. Ms. Maddie Sue Robinson, a late teacher, she tried to get me to join the Prestige Club over and over and over again, and I told her, I'm not joining a club like this. I have a reputation to uphold. And she tricked me to come downstairs one day. And I came downstairs and the Prestige room was full of girls. I just have thirty more seconds. Was full of girls and one more guy. Needless to say, I never missed a Prestige meeting after that. And then I was elected president. That's Tammy being a visionary, because we were able to bring a lot more guys over to the Prestige Club. Not because the Prestige Club was so great, because the Prestige Club wanted to know, because the guys wanted to know why Ray's staying at the school every day. So I attribute that to my friend Tammy as well. Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right. So as we hear the village of Maywood and through the work that we do through the Education Foundation, we've worked with Aerostar Aviation Aviation. Dr. Holmes was more than my god sister with the Holmes family, with the Butler family. She was a mentor and helped build our exploring program through the aviation post that we have in after-school programming at the 200 building. We've worked with our middle school students and even some of our freshmen and sophomores at Proviso East over the past two years. Prior to Dr. Holmes passing, we had applied for after-school and summer funding. I'm happy to share that we have secured funding for the next three years to run our Aerostar Aviation funding program. I strongly recommend that Proviso Township School District 209 invest in the aviation program at Proviso East and throughout the district to allow the program and serve with a pipeline that we can continue to grow during the school hours to ultimately become a young person's career. Through the work that we do through the Healthy Maywood West Cook Career Life Readiness Initiative, we're providing Aerostar Sparks for our students grades K through fourth, which is designed to expose young children to aviation and aerospace through the age-appropriate activities, stories, movies, and field trips. They also learn the anatomy of the aircraft, the history of aviation, and aviation safety and space exploration. For our fifth through eighth grader students, they learn how to operate remote-controlled helicopters and airplanes, fly flight simulators, build and launch rockets, and even airport planning and designing. The work that we're looking at doing with our ninth to twelfth graders through the Aviation Apprenticeship is brand-making a whole of real-world practical applications of science and real-world X projects to discover the rich history of aviation, including local Chicago aviation history, during hands-on experiments and activities for building kites and model airplanes to flying simulations designed for airports. Working in the area of workforce development, there are modules designed with specific aviation career pathways in mind. Apprenticeship gain extensive knowledge and real-world experiences on flight theory, weather, flight planning, aviation careers, cockpit instrumental, virtual reality, aerospace engineering, airline operations, and air traffic control. This would be an excellent in-school enrichment program that needs to be implemented. Aerostar gives wings to dreams. They enhance and promote and support athletic and academic awareness of aviation and aerospace careers, opportunities for underrepresented students, especially African-American and Latino youth. So I ask that you all please consider implementing this life-changing career readiness experience within our school system, and we look forward through the Education Foundation and the village of Maywood to help out when we can to implement it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Ray? And you did apply for the five minutes, so you have a five minutes.
Good evening, board. Hi, Samuel. Hi, Amanda. Boards, it is my honor on behalf of the class of Proviso East, class of 1996, and the family of Dr. Tamara Holmes, as we affectionately know her, Tammy Butler. It is an honor and with a heavy yet joyous heart that I stand before you today. On December 1st of 2024, we lost a beacon of innovation and light. Tammy, as we called her, lived a purposeful life rooted in love, commitment, and fortitude. Dr. Holmes devoted her life's work to the field of, as I call it, educational aviation, spending resentless hours to developing Aerostar Avion Institute. It wasn't just a school of aviation, but it opened doors. It shattered glass ceilings for every future aviator or pilot that will follow in the entrenched footsteps that she left behind. In her words, "Legacy is not what you do while you're here on Earth, but what you leave behind when you're gone." And it is with that that I petition this board, and no, I don't have a box of petitions. When we petition you, we ask you that you recognize and honor her legacy here in Proviso East within Proviso Township District 209 by dedicating, as my classmates said, either a classroom in her honor. I would like to see a mural personally in one of the science hallways. And more importantly, in request of her family, on behalf of her family and her husband, they would love to see her program implemented here within the district. We know that Tammy came to her home district. She came here on numerous occasions, if I'm not mistaken, and requested that the program be brought to the district. And it was, it didn't happen. What other way, what greater way can we honor her and recognize her legacy? When I tell you, listen, she is a historian. She will be in the books. This was the first minority-owned, if I'm not mistaken, aviation school, right? Owned by a minority woman.
In the world.
In the world. This is not in Illinois. This is not in the United States. We're talking about the world. And the one thing that I recall very clearly is that when we were in school, you all built us to be nothing but the what?
Best.
Best. Tammy emanated that from the minute she stepped into Proviso East in 1992 to the day that we walked across the stage on June 2nd of 1996. If you don't pass anything else, please, in her honor, recognize her legacy. Let her be honored. There's a school in the city that has renamed their entire school after her because of the work that she did with them. At the very least, what we can do is to honor her wishes and the petitions that she's brought before this board on numerous occasions prior to me being here today and implement her program, not just because this is her legacy, but because she, just like every other student that's in our district, wants an opportunity to fly. So please, take it upon yourselves, consider what's being presented before you, and honor Tammy's legacy. Thank you.
Tanya Butler?
Good evening, board, superintendent, friends, and family. My name is Tanya Butler Smith, and I am Tamara Holmes Butler, Tamara Butler Holmes.
Yes, sir.
Mom, my husband and I, we raised, we were here and graduated from Proviso East in 1997. All seven of my children graduated from Proviso Township School.
Seventy-seven.
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 But what did I graduate after, Tammy? Good now, girl. Nineteen seventy-six, I came from high school. I'm from this school. And we have always had a legacy at this school of ongoing family legacy with my husband, my children. None of my grandchildren came here, but still, they know about Proviso, because we instilled it in what Proviso did for us. Tammy was always a forerunner, a go-getter, and one of her main things was to pass on her knowledge to others. And when she wanted to start flying, I was like, you sure you wanna go up there in the air and be flying airplanes? 'Cause the only way down is you don't know what gonna happen. But she would never had any fear. She loved to go up in the sky. And she wanted others to experience what she experienced when she went up. And I appreciate Ray. I didn't even know Ray was that close to my daughter. But Maywood being such a small community, we all bonded together. I knew their parents, they knew my kids and everything. So as I stand here, I ask the board to please vote or whatever, take in the recommendation to have at least something named in her honor, because she loved the school. She wanted to see the kids in this district first, reach the high potentials that they could. And as we always say, the best comes out of Proviso. Thank you so much.
Latania Scott? Or is it Latoria? Sorry. You look like a hen. I apologize.
Hello, everyone. I would just like to say, I'm a Tammy Butler Holmes. At fourth grade, I believe it was, when she came to Emerson. And she has always, as far as I've known, talked about being in the sky, okay? And to watch her walk out her dream and to be such, not just, I mean, just a walking inspiration. And it didn't matter who you were. It didn't matter status or anything like that. She was so humble and so sweet. And she gave selflessly from herself to all these children, to the communities and the people, the lives that everyone here that she's touched. I currently work in the Chicago Public School System in the facilities management. And yes, we have, as she stated, Chicago has honored her. And so I would love to see our hometown where we grew up to be able to come in and take, you know, a picture right there, you know, that we are honoring her right here where it all began for not just her, but all of us. So I have two petitions, this is not easy, let me pick it up, in support of this, so that we can show that I love and support for her, all the things that she's done. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimmy Butler?
I forgot something so important. Oh, my gosh. The class of 96 is going to do a fundraiser to honor a graduate of the class of 2026 who's interested in aviation. We're going to honor them with that next year. So please, 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 we're gonna do that on Tammy's behalf as well. I forgot that. Sorry.
Kimmy Butler?
Hello. Good evening, board.
Good evening.
I'm Kimmy Butler. I'm Tammy's, one of Tammy Butler's younger siblings. Also a lifelong resident of Maywood, was once a homeowner in Maywood, recently just moved out. But been in Maywood all my life, went to Emerson Elementary, came through eighth grade, then attended Proviso East, graduated and clapped a vote one. So would truly be an honor if you, the board, was to take in consideration the initiatives that everyone's asking for and do something great in Tamra's honor. What I have here is a letter from the Aerostar Avion Institute. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Board of Aerostar Avion Institute. So it's a letter. It says, "Dear members of the board." It's written by Kristi Farrakhan, who's currently the Executive Director over the board. Dear members of the board, my name is Kristi Farrakhan, and I'm the Executive Director of Aerostar Avion Institute in P. I am writing this to emphasize the immense significance of offering the Aerostar Avion Institute's program within the Maywood school system. What better place to honor the legacy of our esteemed founder, Dr. Tamara L. Holmes, than in Proviso East Town, I'm sorry, than in Proviso Township High School District, where she is an alumna of Emerson Elementary and Proviso East High Schools? Dr. Holmes held her alma mater in high regard and frequently spoke about her school's significant role in her life's dedication to empowering young minds and promoting diversity in aviation. As a collective, we must continue her mission. The Aerostar Avion Institute program not only serves as a gateway to STEM education, but also embodies Dr. Holmes' visionary commitment to inspire the next generation of aviation leaders and aerospace innovators. Through our pipeline, we provide our students with invaluable opportunities to explore the fields of aviation and aerospace, equipping them with the knowledge and experience that will prepare them for successful careers. Honoring Dr. Holmes' legacy through the AAI program within the Maywood and Proviso Township community will create a pathway for students to engage with STEM education while fostering a sense of pride in their heritage and community. The initiative will empower students to pursue their dreams, showcasing the impact that one of their own has made in the world. As we come together to advocate for the inclusion of Aerostar Avion Institute programs at PHS and the advocacy of education and empowerment of Black and Brown youth all over the world, we can ensure that Dr. Holmes' legacy lives on through the transformational impact it will have on Proviso students and the broader Maywood community. We look forward to more pirates taking flight. Thank you for your attention to this important matter. Sincerely, Kristi Farrakhan. Thank you.
Thank you. Clifton Ballard?
Good afternoon, board and everyone. Here from Proviso Township. I'm here with my business partner on behalf of Dream Chasers United. And it's actually a divine moment for us to be here tonight. I've actually encountered Ms. Butler Holmes regarding her legacy. And I've never met her face-to-face, but I actually met her mother, Ms. Tanya Butler. And Ms. Tanya Butler spoke so much about her daughter's impact and that she happened here in Proviso Township and just students across the nation. And as me and Ms. Butler spoke, we honed in on the Dream Chasers United mission to make sure that students do have the knowledge and resources to reach the success, whether it be in aviation, whether it be in the doctor field, the medical field, whether it be in law. So the Dream Chasers United program that we look to bring here to District 209 focuses on financial literacy, entrepreneurship, workforce development, and mental health. And throughout this program, we look to really amplify the passion that Ms. Butler had as far as honing in on her skills and reaching the sky, knowing that the sky is the limit. So we really look at bringing this program to Proviso Township to harness that for these students here. There's a lot of unmet potential here. As we said, Proviso Township produces the best. And with that, we want is within all of us to create that ecosystem to harness that within these students. So right now, we come to just present our program to District 209 that we look to work with the high schools, Proviso East West, and PMSA. So we're gonna just get in on the members of the community with their skills and expertise to focus that in on these students and the young potential here that's here in the Maywood and Proviso Township. And as you see, when that ecosystem is realized, you produce many Tamra Butlers. There's a lot of potential here within Maywood that we must all hone in on. So we come here to just focus on, to hone in on our program, Dream Chasers United. Our virtual and in-person programs make it possible for many of the entrepreneurs and professionals here within the Proviso Township, even if they're not here anymore, that have gone around the world, to come back and speak to the students here and to empower them and to give them that insight, but also that inspiration to that the sky is the limit. So we just urge the board to really consider our program and get the conversation started for Dream Chasers United programs. As we have coming up, our Young Entrepreneurs Program, which focuses on entrepreneurship and is in partnership with a network for teaching entrepreneurship in Earnz Young. And within this program, we are gearing up early students to prepare businesses through learning social responsible businesses as well as entrepreneurship. And the business, the Young Entrepreneurs Program commences with a business pitch competition. And the business pitch competition is sponsored by Earnz Young and Google and gives the students a chance to pitch their business for the regional Chicago, but also to make it to the national competition in New York that is sponsored. And they will receive a flight and a trip for their whole family to New York. So as we bring this to the board, we would definitely ask you guys to consider the Dream Chasers United program for the upcoming 2025 school year and here in Proviso Township as a staple to really find its end on the potential and the power of the community and these students.
Thank you. Miss Martha Dixon?
Good evening, everyone. I want to give a huge shout out and thank you to the amazing staff and faculty at the Proviso West Holiday Tournament. It was a blast. You guys did a phenomenal job. I am not a sports person, but I was there every day, sitting through several games. As a board member, part of our responsibility is to truly get out and interface with the community. And I had a ball this year. You guys did it. Thank you so much.
Demetrius Youngs? I think that.
How y'all doing?
How y'all doing? We just have one more thing. We're partnering with the village of Maywood to present the My Brothers Keepers program. So we're reaching out and we're looking for, we're going to read to third graders through six different schools throughout Maywood. I think we're still trying to target the exact date, but I know it's gonna be a Thursday, I believe, the third Thursday of every month. So we're looking to sign up as many black men that are looking to read to these young, young, young black boys throughout Maywood. So please, we have a sign-up sheet, and then we also have some literature to kind of explain what we're trying to do with the My Brothers Keeper and our programming. So anybody that's looking to read to these young boys, they really need our assistance, and they just need our vision and our faces in these schools. So please help us out with that. Black hair, bro. What's up, black hair? Thanks to Mayor Nathaniel Booker for presenting that and letting us be the head of that and pushing it, for sure. Thank you.
Brandon McCarlin?
How are you doing, board members?
Good evening.
Superintendent? I'm not gonna tell you too much more than what everyone else has said about this brilliant woman. I met her a few years ago. One of the things that stood out to me is her love for Maywood, her love for Proviso East. We honored her at the Dr. King Operation of the Gala a few years ago. If you look at some of her pictures, she's holding a Proviso East jacket in that picture. And she's standing right in front of Chairman Fred Hampton, who's a former Proviso alumni. I'm the one who gave her that jacket. I gave her that jacket, who I got, I also got it from Dr. Hardy. He gave me a few jackets because he knew I was moving around and coming in contact with some pretty elite alumni. And the objective was to try to lure them back to Proviso East. That jacket was my last one. I couldn't think of any other pirate to give that to. So, and when I gave it to her, she had the war from that Dr. King gala in her hand. And when I put that jacket in front of her, she did like this to the war. And when I put that jacket in front of her, she did like this to the war. She nailed that pirate up. So, um, talking to her, um, um, the, the time that I have spoken with her, um, she plays, she keep her cards to her chest pretty tightly. You know, she comes, she come in contact with some pretty elite people. So who am I? You know, but anytime I run up Proviso East, she blew, uh, she would glow. Maywood, she would glow. One of the last conversations that I had with her, and I'm glad her classmate is it. She, we had a ninety-six. Almost better than eighty-six. Almost. But one of the last conversations we had is, she was y'all's valedictorian, correct?
Yes.
Okay. She spoke in that graduation, correct?
Yes.
One of the last things that we talked about, she want that graduation and that speech because she felt it was recorded. Her family can attest that there was a documentary, but she mentioned something about that documentary, but she wanted that video. I posted about it, didn't get any feedback. So if there's anybody that has that video footage, please give it to the family so they can utilize it for whatever purpose that she had intended for. So that was one of the last things that we talked about. And I'm gonna let you know, to be specific, there's a wall of fame at Proviso East. As alumni, as we do appreciate it when it's not political. In this situation, this is a slam dunk. She deserved to be on that wall. She deserved to be on that wall with all the other Hall, uh, World Hall, Hall of Famers. She deserved a room. Do y'all have a, a aviation teacher named Mr. Betis or something like that?
That's our physics teacher.
Okay. So I read an article today about, he had an aviation physics program, correct?
Yes.
At Proviso East. He was in collaboration with Lewis University.
Yeah.
So whatever connection was with Lewis University, you got Aerostar, and she absolutely told me that she wanted to be in Proviso East and then brings out to all other schools in the area. So I'm imploring you to, through the family and through Aerostar, to support them. If they don't have any other alumni, but they got my backing on saying that the students are incredible.
Anthony White?
Uh, good. I'm not gonna speak today. I'm gonna hand my time over to, uh, Ms. Allen.
Good evening, President Valdezquez, Vice President Hickson, Superintendent, and this name, I'm impressed. My name is Taylor Allen. I am the Head of Security at Proviso Management Science Academy, also known as PMSA. I began my tenure with the district on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. I was excited about the opportunity to work in a high school setting, particularly given my background and corrections. I was eager to grow professionally within the district. Unfortunately, my initial excitement was met with challenges that became apparent after my arrival. I quickly observed a lack of inconclusivity and fairness in the district, especially towards those who were not personally connected or related to others within the district. This created an environment where opportunities seemed restricted based on personal relationships rather than marriage. In early twenty twenty-three, I was appointed as the lead interim for, for Proviso West High School in addition to my role at PMSA for a total of four months. This was done without an increase in compensation as I continued to operate under a salary of sixty-eight thousand, three sixty-five per year. In May of twenty twenty-three, I had to take emergency leave due to failed policy-like symptoms. Upon returning in August of twenty twenty-three, I was then diagnosed with stage two invasive ductal breast cancer at age twenty-nine. While I was told by HR that I could apply for FMLA, once I reached my one-year anniversary within the district, I was later informed that on FMLA, short-term disability, and I R F benefits were denied due to me not meeting the one-year requirement per HR. Despite continuous communication with HR and attempts to explore available options, I was told there were no other resources available to me as a district's school nine employee. My treatment plan involved a mastectomy, full hysterectomy, chemotherapy, and multiple rounds of radiation. In July of twenty twenty-four, I received notice from HR that my leave was unauthorized and I needed to discuss a return to work day. I provided HR documentation explaining that I was still undergoing active treatment and will, and will require additional time for radiation. Instead of offering supporting resources, HR decided to pay me out for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. I previously went an entire year without a paycheck from the district. HR informed me that my health insurance would be terminated if I did not return to work immediately and actually that felt as if I was being discriminated against, especially since I am covered underneath the ADA, which ensures protection for individuals like me doing merit code property. I returned to the district on October ninth, twenty twenty-four with medical restrictions, having just started radiation therapy the previous day. However, my return was not met with support. In fact, it became evident that there was little interest in me getting re-acclimated into the district. I felt that the intention was to force me out of the district and my return only thwarted that plan. Upon returning to work, I encountered numerous challenges that went beyond typical workplace issues. As an only diagnosed cancer survivor, I faced a lack of understanding and support, both professionally and personally. I found that my role as the Head of Security was undermined. Despite my leadership position, I was treated as a subordinate and denied the authority to manage my team effectively. There was a clear bias in how I was treated, both because of my gender and health condition. I also faced resistance to new strategies I attempted to implement in my role with threats made against me over seven boundaries. This was especially frustrating as I was simply trying to improve operational efficiency within the security department here at PMSA. I experienced significant micromanagement from a PMSA administrator who repeatedly overruled my decisions and had tasks reassigned to others even after I completed them multiple times. Despite ongoing communication with the PMSA administrator and assistant principals, my work deemed, my work was deemed inadequate by the PMSA administrator. I felt as though I was never given the opportunity to lead my staff in a meaningful way. By returning to the district, there was little to no support in gaining access to the district keys that the lead interim security manager was appointed in my absence. It took approximately nine days to retrieve access to the district keys that were originally cut for the lead security interim in my absence. Another power struggle. In addition to experiencing micromanagement, I felt threatened by the PMSA administrator, followed up by a previous discussion that we held in my office on December thirteenth at three seventeen PM. As I quote, Ms. Allen, I don't want to hear the conversation. I'm sorry, Ms. Allen, I don't want to hear this conversation again from my staff or your staff. If I do, we will certainly have issues. I perceive this statement as a potential threat from the PMSA administrator. I regularly send emails to staff regarding security-related matters, ensuring that teachers and counselors were kept informed. However, I noticed that my email access was restricted without clear explanation. I was told that all staff had restricted access, yet when the interim lead at Proviso West sent down an email January fifth, twenty twenty-five at nine forty-six PM in regards to Proviso West's security, his access was granted. I sent out an email January fifth, twenty twenty-five to PMSA security at nine thirty-five PM when my access was restricted. I was later told that all principals had the authority to decide who should have, who should have email access, which seemed to be applied inconsistently, further limiting my ability to communicate effectively in my role.
Ms. Allen, it's five minutes. We gave you, we gave you five minutes. You can submit it. You can submit that.
Oh, I have it for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Aya Arabajo.
I apologize. I said that incorrectly. Good evening, everyone. My name is Iya, Igiyala, but I go by Iya, um, for short. So this is my first time back at a school board meeting, only my second time in a school board meeting. Um, I usually work on Tuesday evenings, but now I found myself free. Um, the last time I was here, uh, the matter of racial tension was my topic. Um, I'm not gonna rehash what happened to my son last February, but I do want to, um, implore the school district to, uh, make some efforts to not act like there isn't an issue, um, between the students, um, in the district. Particularly at PMSA, that's where my eldest son and my youngest son, my eldest son went here. My youngest son was the one who was a victim of, uh, racial attack by some of his, um, fellow students. Um, I will be in contact with the administration of PMSA to further the conversations that we've had last year. It seems like there were some efforts made in the beginning and then they fell off. And, uh, just because my eldest son left the school and my youngest son no longer has problems, um, of the sort, doesn't mean those problems have gone away and that has been confirmed. Um, we really, you know, I read the mission, I heard you state the mission in the beginning, and I read the mission. And we're, um, not fulfilling that mission and our children are not comfortable here while they're trying to achieve academically. The fact that my eldest son did not really disclose all the racial, um, violence that he, uh, experienced at this school and that my youngest son had experienced so much of it and it didn't come to a head until he was called a racial slur numerous times at his face at lunchtime, that it became, um, a thing. Um, means that there's so many more students suffering, suffering racial violence at PMSA. Um, like I said, I've been very busy. I've been working Tuesday, but now I'm free. And, um, you will see seeing me more and often, uh, because we're not, we can't act like it's not happening. Just because we don't hear about it doesn't mean that it's gone away. And, um, one of the things that was, uh, suggested, and I know I have thirty seconds left, so I'm asking for a little bit of an extension. One thing that had been implemented last year was, um, those students who do. One thing that one of my eldest sons started was, um, when, um, a student is experiencing racial harassment, and I'm speaking specifically about Black students from Brown students, um, unfortunately, uh, to document it and submit it. Um, I was under the impression that there was maybe like, kind of like a comment box where they were able to submit these, um, complaints and they could be addressed. Um, I'd like to see that implemented. If not, if it wasn't before, that it be implemented again. And again, documenting it and confronting those, the, the aggressors. Because we can't change people's behavior, but we can certainly make them accountable for it. So I know I'm out of time, but I just wanted to, um, let you know that I've not gone away. And, um, I have time now. And, um, it's very important that our students feel comfortable. You know, it's one thing to excel academically, but we can't send them out into the world thinking that they're, they're, um, that they can be abused. Un- unacceptable. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Great. Um, thank you, everyone, for your comments. Um, we would like to, uh, change things up a little bit. I know, uh, I have number nine, a student recognition, but I'm just gonna switch it up with number ten, the resolution. We'd like to do the resolution first and then, uh, proceed with, uh, student recognition.
No, we can do the video now. Let's do the video now. Can we advance this to the recognition slot? So I do want to thank, uh, Board Member Patterson for bringing this to my attention and letting me know, as I am new to this district, uh, just who Dr. Tamara Holmes was and the legacy that she is leaving behind in this world. And I had the, had the, um, great opportunity to speak to, uh, Dr. Holmes' mother twice now and to meet the family. And so thank you all for being here. Um, but I am going to turn this over to Board Member Patterson, who has a few words and then wants to, um, present the resolution on behalf of the Board of Education.
I'll just take this opportunity to name the class of nineteen ninety-six, seven. Let me get it right. Did you get it right, ninety-six? Ms. Antoinette Gray, Ray, and your team, um.
Seventy-six has something to do with it too.
Okay. Seventy-six has something to do with it as well. Um, glad that we were able to hear each and every one of your comments, uh, tonight. Uh, this is what board meetings and community, yes, it's a business meeting of the Board of Education. I even had a comment. I'm gonna save it until next board meeting, but, um, yeah, I'll move forward.
And your program and what you're trying to do.
Oh, my gosh, my, it's gonna make me cry. Um, these kids are incredible. Uh, we started running program in twenty twelve, whatever school matters. Uh, and we realized right away that we needed to have a formula established for young people to actually have a pathway and a pipeline. In twenty sixteen, we started the nonprofit, the Aerostar Aviation Institute, and then Boeing stepped up in a major way and invested in the Aerostar Aviation Institute in order to provide aviation and aerospace education from kindergarten. So now we start with the Aerosparks program from kindergarten through fourth grade. We have our aviation exploration program for fifth through eighth grade. And then we have our aviation apprenticeship program at the high school level. We just launched our Aero Ambassador program, which is for our alumni network. And we also launched this year for the first time, Aero Work, which are art programs dedicated to licenses and certification in ground school, uh, drone licensing, and much more to come, aerospace engineering, rocketry. And these kids, we have over sixty kids right now at universities across the country studying a major in aviation. We have about twenty in active duty military on aviation assignments. We're talking about aircraft, hydraulics, drone pilots, helicopter units. Uh, our students are extraordinary and they got land slides ahead of the competition, which is what we have to do in order to be able to compete.
So I will read the resolution honoring the legacy of Dr. Tamara L. Holmes. Whereas Dr. Tamara L. Holmes was born on July twenty-ninth, nineteen seventy-eight in Maywood, Illinois, and passed away on December first, twenty twenty-four, leaving behind a legacy of inspiration, service, and unwavering dedication to her family, community, and profession. And whereas Dr. Tamara L. Holmes, the beloved daughter of Jimmy Butler and Tanya Smith Butler, and the third of seven siblings, grew up in a family that instilled values of grit, determination, and community service. And whereas Dr. Tamara L. Holmes married Jeremy Holmes on September sixth, two, two thousand and three, and together they raised two daughters, Tamira and Arielle, Arielle. Fostering a home filled with love, support, and shared aspiration. And whereas Dr. Tamara, Tamara L. Holmes was a proud nineteen ninety-six graduate of Proviso East High School, embodying the spirit and value of her alma mater through her exceptional achievements and lifelong dedication to uplifting others. And whereas Dr. Tamara L. Holmes pursued higher education at Southern Illinois University, earning a bachelor's degree in aviation management, of sailing, and academics, and flight training, and becoming one of the first in her class to fly solo. And whereas Dr. Tamara L. Holmes distinguished herself professionally through her work at Landrum and Brown, her founding of Aerostar Consulting Corporation, and her visionary leadership in creating the Aerostar Aviation Institute, which inspired and prepared thousands of minority youth for careers in STEM and aviation. And whereas Dr. Tamara L. Holmes dedicated her life to advocating for underrepresented communities, breaking barriers in the aviation industry, and creating opportunities for Black and Brown professionals. And where Dr. Tamara L. Holmes was a licensed and ordained minister, inter- intertwining her faith with her professional and community endeavors and became widely recognized for her motto, "Give wings to dreams", which captured her commitment to empowering others. And whereas Dr. Tamara L. Holmes met with President Barack Obama to discuss community building efforts and initiatives, extended her impact. building efforts and initiatives extended her impact globally to countries like St. Lucius, Debel, and became a source of inspiration for thousands worldwide. And whereas Dr. Tamara L. Holmes will be remembered as a bold and tenacious leader, visionary trailblazer, devoted family member and community champion, whose indeplorable contributions earned her affectionate title of Fly Girl. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Proviso Township High School, District 209, hereby honors the extraordinary life and legacy of Dr. Tamara L. Holmes, recognizing her profound impact on her community, her industry, and the countless lives she touched. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall be entered into the official record of Proviso Township High School, District 209, and a copy presented to her family as an expression of deep gratitude and admiration for her extraordinary contribution, enduring legacy, adapted this January eleventh, ninth, twenty twenty-five by the Board of Education of Proviso Township High School, District 209. Sam, Mr. Samuel Altarez, Board President, Ms. Sandra Hickson, Board Vice President, Jeanne Barbein, Secretary, Mr. Chris Moehe, Superintendent. So do you guys want to go down to the rest of the room? Sam, would you like to present?
This is your children, yes.
Before we go, we just have the entire family coming up.
Should make a third row up.
All right, good evening, children family. My name is Rodney Nolan, the administrator of the last week. We will be celebrating tomorrow, next month, during Doctor's remembrance. We will have a showcase for, I'm inviting you guys to come out. We'll put together something just to, you know, show that she's a pirate and what her contributions were to aviation and to Maywood and to Proviso East. And so, you know, give me a little time to put this together since I'm getting all of this tonight. I am honored that we will have an opportunity to showcase her and educate our students. I'll meet with my science teachers tomorrow, we have a science hallway where we can showcase her and all of her work and contributions to her education. So, my, to you and the family, our condolences from the last weeks and she will forever be a pirate.
I just want to say, boy, I really appreciate it. It makes me feel really good to know that my community recognized my daughter's talent and all because of you all as well, because of her science teacher, math teacher, Mr. Peters, Mrs. Lee, and the superintendents, that still behind them to put out a student like that. And it was a whole team of them, her graduating class, they were top notch, I'd never seen it here before, but it can be done, so continue to do the good work.
At this time, I guess we'll have the student recognition now. Thank you. So, fortunately, the students that we would like to recognize are not able to be here today because they are doing the things that we wanted to recognize them for, and that would be our Proviso West men's basketball team, who, while it was mentioned that we put on a wonderful holiday tournament, they did take third place at that tournament, which was... I'm making sure I saw Rodney Glenn, but I saw, I saw, I saw the hands coming together twice. I'll say, oh, third time, I'll say. But I did, you know, we will find a time out of them and bring certificates to them. But I do just want to say, this was the first time that I experienced a Proviso West Holiday Tournament. And going into this tournament, I expected to watch some good basketball, and I did. What I did not realize at the time, but I do now know, is that the Proviso West Holiday Tournament is so much more than a basketball tournament, and it's not just something that is Proviso West. This is something that we talk about, one Proviso, this really is an opportunity to bring an entire community together. And so, I appreciated all of the events that happened that day and some of the things that were not advertised or were not in the papers. The class reunions, the friends coming together, the staff working together in different ways. And so, I am excited for the next Proviso tournament. And to the board, we have already, I will have an update for you on this tournament in the coming weeks, as we're still, as we're still going through it and digesting and understanding how things went. But we do know now that we are going to start planning for that next tournament now, so we can find a way to make this next tournament the best one that we have. But again, a huge congratulations to the coaching staff and to the boys that have put a ton of efforts this year, coming together and putting together a winning team. So, our congratulations to them. Sorry, Principal Hall. I do want to say I have known Principal Hall for many years, so sometimes I will refer to him in the drawing, and I apologize, no, Principal Hall. Thank you. So moving on, we will go back to our resolutions. And so, we do have a resolution I just wanted to inform on that I will bring to the board in the, in the coming, in the coming board, I'm sorry, in the February board meeting. So at the Joint Annual Conference held in Chicago this past November, it was a fantastic professional development opportunity for the districts across the state, including Proviso School District. Participants were able to attend sessions on topics, and later tonight, we will have a, a highlight of the triple I conference was the introduction of the Vision 2030 Blueprint for Excellence in Public K-12 Education. For the benefit of those in the audience today, I'd like to play a short video to introduce and explain Vision 2030.
Educators are preparing students to succeed in a world of constant innovation. The job a student will have in the future may not even exist today. So, what's needed to help students strive in a world of unknowns? Vision 2030, a blueprint that prioritizes future-focused learning, shared accountability, and predictable funding to advance K-12 public education in Illinois. Future-focused learning means giving students a head start on post-secondary success and providing them with learning environments that are safe and secure. Imagine a world where all students are... That's a future where student loan debt is less of a burden and everyone graduates ready to shine. Shared accountability means redefining student success. Just like children's physical growth, academic progress does not always happen in a linear manner. Bold growth and proficiency should be measured over time to see how they're really doing. Benchmark data should be shared with teachers in real time so that quick interventions can be put in place. Lastly, school districts need a predictable fund. Schools would need to be able to rely on, leaving both funding based on the evidence-based funding law and have a located fund towards urgent safety needs. This is Vision 2030. To learn more and express your support, visit illinoisvision2030.com. Together, we can fulfill the promise of pub...
I can share the video. I was sharing the video with the board. Clearly, people are interested in this, they must be crashing the website if you have the opportunity to view this video. But the Vision 2030 was developed throughout, through an engagement effort that included input from more than one thousand stakeholders, including locally elected school board members. It also reflects input from discussions with local educators who were tirelessly inside and outside of school buildings to improve outcomes for children from all backgrounds across Illinois. Development of Vision 2030 Blueprint was led by the Illinois Association of School Administrators, the Illinois Association of School Boards, the Illinois Principals Association, the Illinois Association of School Business Officials, and the Illinois Association of Regional School Superintendents. School districts from across Illinois are being asked to express support for the goals and priorities of Vision 2030 by passing a resolution at a public meeting. Over the next several weeks, I will provide you with additional information on Vision 2030, leading up to requesting the Board of Education to sign the Vision 2030 Resolution, as many districts have done so and are in the process of doing it as we speak. Thank you.
Well, at this time, I guess, we'll have a report of communication from the superintendent.
At this time, I would like to call up our representatives from the business office, who will provide us our financial updates.
Good evening, Board members, superintendent, staff, and community. My name is Cassandra, and I will be representing Dr. Gil in her absence, and I will be going over the treasurer's report. For your review, you can see the treasurer's report right now. As far as revenue is concerned, we're at forty-nine percent of collecting our revenues, and we are at fifty percent for our expenditures for the year, which means we are sitting very well because we're about the halfway mark, and as you can tell, we're literally at the halfway mark. And if... And next, we have the bills list for your review and for your report. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. President Altarez, Ms. Sandra Hickson, Secretary Barbein, my name is Alexander Ashoff, I am the Deputy Superintendent for Educational Services. So keeping in, just kind of shuffling things a little bit on your items, you have an item in front of you for information purposes for seventeen I titled School Links Post-Secondary Platform. Moving a little forward, busy to have a guest with us, just respecting his time here as well. We do a lot to prepare our students for their post-secondary opportunities. A lot of that, right now, currently comes through a program called Naviance, which many of our students experience and interact with during their senior year as they're filling out college applications and asking teachers to fill out recommendations. Regularly throughout the course of having Naviance, which is a power school product, we've seen just a, the usage is not where we would like it, and having some interactions with primarily our counselors. Through our opportunities beyond our school and partnering with other schools with our one goal opportunities and talking with other schools on what's working for them, we came across an opportunity called School Links. We've had School Links present to our counselors, to our administrative staff, to our executive cabinet, and this is an opportunity we're looking to explore and replace Naviance. So again, this is just information for tonight, but I do have with me Mr. Mike McEnery to speak to you just a little bit about this information item.
Hello, thanks for the opportunity. Mike here with School Links. We've really exploded across the state of Illinois in the last probably three to four years now, working with about eighty percent of Chicagoland school districts, a majority of those districts coming from Naviance. So School Links does everything that Naviance does and so much more. Our goal is to increase student engagement, we're a student-first platform, and from those districts that do come from Naviance, we typically see about four to five hundred percent more time in the platform after a decade's use of Naviance and just one year in School Links. So, we're really student-focused first, but we're also meant to engage all stakeholders, not just students, not just parents and guardians, not just counseling, CTE, work-based learning, and really every staff member in the district. We benefit from an account in regards to helping students prepare for college and career readiness. Also, we want to engage outside of the school district, helping local industry partners get jobs, internships, scholarships, volunteer opportunities in front of students, structured and unstructured internships in the platform that our college reps have access, things like rep visits. Alumni also have access for free for life. This is great for requesting transcripts, continued use of the platform for resume building, shifts in their careers after they graduate, but it also provides a means for the district to engage and bring alumni back in the fold as part of that community. So, some of the components that we're helping school districts and help with, but engage students, college, career, otherwise military, but all pathways, and helping realize a brighter future for themselves. So, very high-level overview there, but be happy to take questions or, you know, address them if you need. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Are there any questions about School Links? All right, so moving on to my superintendent's report. Last week, last month was my first school board meeting with the system board, and what I did is I provided an update on my school entry plan. At that time, my school entry plan was very, very new, I was just entering into the district, so I had an opportunity to do more things. So I just want to run through some of the things that have happened, this is by no means an exhaustive list, but some of the highlights and some of the things that are directly aligned to the work that is in that entry plan. So first, first and foremost, we are continuing to work through, unpacking our current strategic plan. What we're doing with this is looking at the plan that's been... What we're doing with this is looking at the plan that's been put in place and that is in existence through 2026 to understand what has been working, what is not working, what's been done, what has not been attempted yet, but then also looking to see through working and conversations with teachers and administrative teams, how we might be able to strengthen that strategic plan to help, to help make those adjustments that were not made due to the pandemic, so that we can ensure that we are able to be successful in meeting the goals of that plan. Another thing we've done is we've launched a multiple task forces. And so the work, the reasoning behind this task force was that I wanted to empower my own leadership team to take on responsibilities of leading a task force and a task force of multiple stakeholder groups of teachers and parents and students and community members to come together and help make some recommendations, not only for the strength and plan, but also for how we are moving forward in this district. So there are four areas right now that we're interested in, in the work of some task force to provide recommendations, and this is in the high school design, and this is being led by Mr. Calierez and Dr. Brain, and this work is really looking at how we should consider designing our high schools. What does that administrative structure looks like? What does the teacher support look like so that we can just ensure that we're having the best opportunities for our students to be successful and how we can better organize to do that? We also want to take a look at our cell phone policy. This is a hot issue anytime we talk about behaviors within the schools, the cell phone policy. Regardless of whether it's the topic we're trying to talk about or not, seems to always come into the conversation. So we want to make sure that we have some time and space available to have that conversation. Chronic absenteeism and tardies led by Dr. Thomas and Mr. Valente, that is something that we're also looking to get a handle on, as it's something that schools across the nation are looking at right now, and I know it's work that has happened here within the Proviso School District, getting an understanding of not only like what to do around absenteeism and tardy, but also getting an understanding what the root cause is. And so there was an explosion in absenteeism and tardies within Proviso and around the country, or around the time of the pandemic as schools were entering back. And so getting an understanding of what changed from before the pandemic, during the pandemic to now, to have a better understanding of what supports do we need to provide, not only to students but to families? Because what we're seeing right now is that we're still struggling to get our students to school, and in some instances, while they're in school, getting them to go to class. Continue to have several teacher and staff meetings. A couple instances of these are, I've created, we have not met yet, but we have brought the teams together and created the teams to have staff advisory meetings, teacher advisory meetings at each high school. And so in the past, there was a teacher advisory meeting that, a superintendent's advisory, where all teachers were coming together and meeting with the superintendent. What I would like to do differently is have these at each school, so I can understand the differences and the challenges that exist at each of our high schools. I continue to have community meetings, some of the meetings that I've had, and I have the opportunity to have to meet some board members at these as well. We had a community and a parent community socials at each of the high schools as I was entering in, and then was able to attend the PMSA open house. There were some Aspenites and a few other community meetings I was able to attend. Something that I noticed early on was that we do not have what I would consider, what I would have considered complete safety plans for the district. And so as I'm looking at the planning that we have and the documents that we have, I feel that they are incomplete. And so to make sure that we have everything in place, I've worked with our lead of security, Mr. Aaron Peppers, and he brought to, he brought with me, within a team of individuals that have experience in this. And what we're looking to do right now is to create templates that we could use across the district. And the explanation here for them was, how can we ensure that when there is something, when there is an emergency within the building, we know what to do? And so part of that is designing the plan. The second part is, the second part is training on the plan, and the third part is implementing that training to make sure that when we practice this, we're having these after-action reviews to ensure we did everything right, and when we didn't, what is it that we need to change to become better at doing this? So I'm hoping within the next few months to be able to bring to the school board our full emergency planning documents to keep our students safe. I did launch a student survey, and so as I spoke with you in the last board meeting, we had launched a teacher survey, and so now we're collecting feedback from students to understand what their lived experiences are within the district and have a better understanding of what we can do to better support them and improve, essentially improve their experience here in the Proviso School District. A few other things that we've done, we began a review of the scope and sequence for every single course that we have, and you can imagine that it is, it is multiple, so this will take some time for us. And we're also considering any updates to the format for the scope and sequences that we do have. This will take on significant time as we talk with our administrators and our teachers to get a better understanding of what it is that we expect to teach throughout the course and what we expect our students to learn. And so we will work closely with our teams to ensure that we have a, that we have a scope and sequence that is aligned to the Illinois learning standards, and so that we can move to a place where every single day in every single classroom, we have instruction that is aligned to rigorous standards that are, sorry, rigorous, standards aligned to Illinois's expectations. We're looking at our professional development and looking for any types of gaps analysis. What are the developments that aren't being offered? The union has been able to provide me with survey data. Thank you, John, for, I'm sorry, for Dr. Warisani. He's been able to provide me information through a survey that the teachers have taken around professional development. And so we're continuing to go through that and again, find the, find the needs that our staff have, so that we can provide for them the appropriate professional development. I did have a town hall meeting last night at Proviso West specifically to speak about absenteeism and tardiness, something else to speak a little bit more on further down in this report, but I will say it was well-attended. We had about 25, 25 members of the community attend this meeting and ask some really great questions around what are we doing specifically in Proviso West to improve the rate of schooling for our students? As the board knows, I'm trying, I'm attempting to set up bi-weekly board briefings, and that has been offered to every single board member. And we've also created a weekly board update. This is an email that goes out to the board each week to give them an update on all the work that is happening within the district. I've had an opportunity to do a deep dive on all current legal issues with our, with our legal staff. I've implemented weekly meetings with teachers and support staff union leadership. We have, next week, we have our, sorry, next week, tomorrow, we have a meeting with our teachers union and their executive board, and we'll be bringing members of our executive board. And I'm encouraged by this because we are just continuing to build that relationship with our union and then bring our voices together, and I appreciate so much the leadership of Dr. Warisani and Ms. McGee, excuse me, as we've been able to start building that relationship and having those conversations on an ongoing basis. Dr. Warisani and I talk almost every day. We've implemented weekly check-in meetings with all central office personnel, so my cabinet members are now checking in every week in a structured way with their staff and bringing that information to me, and this is essentially the information that drives the weekly board update that I sent you every Friday night. We've developed and designed a weekly bag report, which I'm very excited about, and this Friday, we will launch this bag report system throughout the entire district. A bag report is a, is a report which is, is provided to a student that explains how they are doing in accordance with their behavior, their attendance, and their grades. The thought around this is, we will provide every student a bag report every Friday, it will be printed and placed in the hands of every child, and then we will also be able to email this to parents as well. And so the hope is that we will be able to start having more conversations with our students, students to start realizing how their actions are, are being, are compounded throughout the year, and realizing that it's important for them to be in class every single day. With this, we'll also be able to create a five-week review, so it's a, it's a roll-up report. This is not something that's provided to students, but this is something where administrators can work with school leadership teams to talk about the needs of students in a tiered manner. So looking at students' behavior, attendance, and grades over the course of five weeks, and then having one, having conversations with counselors, with principal leadership teams around interventions that are needed for our students, and then checking every five weeks to see how effective those, to see how effective those interventions have been. I'm excited about this because we can honestly and genuinely say, genuinely say that every five weeks, we are having conversations around every single child, the supports they need, the interventions that are being provided, and their success. So that concludes my update on the entry plan. I'll have an update on the work that I've been doing for this next month in relation to our entry plan. Next, I want to talk about tardy and absences at Proviso West. As I explained to many board members, I had the intention of coming into the district and as, as I was implementing my entry plan, essentially what I was attempting to do was have a structured way to listen to the community, to get a better understanding of the needs before putting any actions into place. What I realized early on was that there was a need to bring changes to Proviso West. What I, what I saw in my visits to the school, which became often, was that we needed some more structure within the buildings. And as I talked to students and I talked to staff, and as I talked to administrators, I realized that it was a, there was a misconception and a breakdown. Administrators felt that they had consequences that were in place for students when it came to their attendance behaviors or attendance patterns, but students and teachers did not believe that there were. And so we realized we needed to do some type of resetting of expectations in that building. And what we needed to do, there were many things, as I explained, that needed to happen. But of all the things that we want to do in, not just in Proviso West, but across the district, we need to make sure that our students have student-going behaviors. We need to make sure that our students are in class and their students have every opportunity to be successful while in, and throughout the school day. So what we are doing is taking a look at how they are implementing tardies and the structures they have for students when they are late to class. And so as it exists now, there are three, sometimes two places where students are late that they must go to get a tardy pass. Students are often waiting in lines that can take up to five to 10 minutes to get a pass. They are handwriting these passes. These, we're documenting these passes on paper and then having to input that into a system. I've worked with our technology team, big kudos to Michael Swanson, who was helped, who helped us identify new systems that could be bought. And so we have a new system where we will have 14 tardy stations across the entire school, at least four on each floor. And with these stations, students' IDs will be scanned and passes, tardy passes will be printed out. We expect this to significantly increase the amount of time that students are, that students spend trying to get these tardy passes. I saw, I saw this system in place within our own district. Principal Hall has a system very similar, he has a hero system that does essentially the same thing. We went with a different system, only because this system interfaces with our PowerSchool so that we can capture the behavior, the behavior data into our SIS, and that it can make real-time updates so teachers understand when students are being marked tardy. We are practicing this system right now, and so for the week of 113, we're at the school, like a central office in the school, and we're helping students understand not only the importance of being in class, but helping them usher themselves through the class, I'm sorry, through the hallways, helping to build their sense of urgency as they move from class to class. Me and Principal Martinez, we have met with every PLC, so essentially talked to every teacher within the building to explain our plan and to make sure they were in agreement with the plan. Through those meetings, we were able to get some feedback that we were able to implement right away to strengthen our plan. Her team is creating a video to explain the changes to our students. We're also, we have a list of students that are really struggling with getting to class on time, so we will be talking to them this week. We had a town hall parent meeting yesterday, as I mentioned, we had about 25 parents and I believe about 20 or so that watched it. I also had a town hall meeting with all the coaches and all the athletes to make sure they understood the expectations. And so this is what is happening right now in the schools. So the consequences, as I mentioned, the students felt that there were no consequences. Talking with administrators, teachers, students, we are moving to a system that we are holding students in power. And so we do know that this will be a struggle, especially early on. As I talked to students, they told me that things like this have happened in the past, but that two to three weeks later, it goes away. So my expectation is, it will take two to three weeks to really show that we're serious about this and we're committed to this, and I have made the commitment to the school principal, to Principal Martinez, that central office will be there to help her and her team for as long as they need, and so we get the order restored, and it's also something that's going to be sustained once we're relieved. And so students will be allowed three tardies per week. Beyond that, on the fourth tardy, they will, they will be given a one-hour detention. If they're late to any class for more than 10 minutes, they will get a detention. If they get three detentions within a week, they'll end up, they'll have to serve a Saturday detention. If they miss that Saturday detention, it will lead to a day of in-school suspension. If they refuse the in-school suspension, it will lead to an out-of-school suspension. And so our hope is that we will never have to suspend a student for being tardy in class. But we do know that some students may push and maybe try and share some of the responsibilities of these consequences. So we're taking each step. There are parent phone calls, and so we are going to be reaching out to parents to make sure they understand that their student has received a detention and didn't show up, or received a Saturday detention and didn't show up. Part of this is our ability to build relationships with parents and reach out to them and communicate with them, so they know that there is a, there's a significant challenge that can be overcome through this conversation. And then we need that encouragement from parents, but also encourage their own child, encourage their children to get to class. There is nowhere in Proviso West that you can't get to within five minutes, as long as you are walking. At a crisp pace, you, actually not at a normal pace, you will be able to get to class on time. We are also looking at students who do not come to class, and so we do have students that will come to school but not go to class. We also have a significant challenge in first period where students are coming in late. And so this, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back here. So being late to class, even if it's first period, will also, will also lead to consequences. So we know that we have to talk to our parents and build relationships with our parents so that they understand that they need to bring their students to school on time if they're driving in buses. Mr. Taylor has done a great job of working with our transportation department to make sure our buses are on time, and our buses are on time. And so the students that are coming late are often walking, are often walking or being brought to school by their parents. And we need to make sure that our parents understand that students not only need to be in school by 8 o'clock, but they need to be in class by 8 o'clock. So that means they probably should be dropping their students off around 7:40 at the latest to give students time to go through the security processes to enter into the building and get to class and be ready. So when it comes to students that are coming to school and not going to class, or students that aren't coming to school and it's unverified, meaning parents are not calling to let us know that their child is sick, that's considered unverified and we consider that a cut. For any class that's cut, they'll receive a half-day of in-school suspension. More than one cut a day, they'll receive a full day of in-school suspension, and missing one day of in-school suspension will generate two days, and beyond that, we'll have conversations around out-of-school suspensions. Are there any questions from the board?
I just have a question. Because we had issues with a high suspension rate in this district, and so what I'm seeing that if you do this, this could happen, a half-day, that's in-school suspension, but I think that's something that we probably should look at. I know that was an issue with the state, a high suspension rate.
I will keep you updated on that. Again, the intention is that we hope that no child gets suspended out of school, but it's going to be, you know, the Proviso West administrative team has to make sure that they are communicating with parents, and we've had a lot of conversations around this, and they're committed to doing this work as well. We also have had conversations around what detention looks like, what in-school suspension will look like, and ensuring that it's not a time for students to engage socially or to be on their phones. The in-school suspension and detention time students will engage in a network.
I have a question. So what about the, and I'm saying this from personal experience, my son takes the bus, and sometimes the bus is like dead things like that. So how are we going to gauge that in case the bus is like?
Yeah, if the bus is light, the students will be excused. There will be no consequences given to students. That's out of their control. I will say, I have no wood to knock on. I got this, but we've been doing it for two days, and we're seeing, already seeing, we're already seeing some improvements in schools, so I'm encouraged. I believe our students can do this. We have incredible students here at Proviso School District at all of our high schools, so I'm encouraged by what I'm seeing, and I'm confident that, I am confident that this will not be a difficult task for us. All right, moving on, I'm going to ask Alex to talk about advanced placement tests.
Good evening, good morning, Board. We have an action for you to consider for our advanced
We have an action for you to consider for our advanced placement test purchase. So, this is something come, come up regular, so advanced placement, or otherwise known as AP, is through our college board. This is an opportunity for students to attend class at a rigorous college-level written curriculum. Now, this opportunity for students, this is a test coming later in school year, but we have registered our students in seeking to expend those funds for up to $155,940. And that's the charge before the fee reduction, so college board gives us a discounted rate depending on the students, if they are identified as low-income. To give you an idea of kind of a four-year look back of the enrollments on our students for the past four years, you can see that over at like district-wide, that we have increased the number of students attending these and enrolling into an advanced placement course, and also the number of enrollment. So, you can see it's not necessarily a one-for-one ratio there because you may have some students in multiple AP classes. Now, if we take a look at now, not only the actual enrollment, but how our students are doing. So, again, we have the number of students, number of courses, the number of tests, and then we're taking a look at the percentage of students scoring three or higher. This three is significant because that is kind of the minimum threshold that a student, if they were to take the test, which is scaled on a one-to-five score, if they score three, that's typically that minimum threshold to then get college credit. Now, this is specific to each institution, so it's not always you get a three, you automatically get college credit, but that's kind of our threshold we're looking at to see success with our students. So, again, as we see years go through here, we are seeing an increase, not only in the number of students, but how our students are generally performing here. You can kind of see a slight fluctuation from 22 to 23 and 24. So, that's Proviso East. It's similar with Proviso West. Again, the, as far as the number of students and how the, they are performing overall, the students scoring three or higher are again kind of steadily increasing. We're seeing an increase then overall, and it's similar with the, in Science Academy. And this is again, very broad, but we do get feedback on specific courses and how specific courses are doing, and that is also something that the principals and the master schedulers have taken a look at overall to see how the students are doing and how our teachers are doing in preparing those students for this rigorous assessment, again, it happens later in the term. Any questions, board? Next up, we have several other action items for you to consider around our early college department, led by Dr. Bren.
Good evening. Board President Valdear, Vice President Hickson, Secretary Bart Van Esteen, board members, and Superintendent Mohib. This evening, we have three action items from the early college and CTE office. First being the dual degree program for SY26. As you know, last year, we did a soft launch for the program. This year, it has been much more intentional with a great deal of messaging that has gone out. And we currently have eight students in our program, and as you see, we have some costs there outlined for you in gold. For our cohort one, year one, those are current eight students that are in the program for our dual degree. What we're looking to do for SY26 next school year is to add 21 students to that program, seven from each of the high schools, which would bring our total to 29 students for the SY26 school year. And you see that does come with some cost increase. Tuition increase would be from $48,000 to $168,000, and you see the other costs that are associated with our students attending. I will share that the tuition that I received for first semester puts us at a very good position to stay under budget, but we want to make sure that our students that are in the cohort have an opportunity to take summer school, should they need to, for the appropriate degree in which they're pursuing. Are there any questions at this time in regard to our dual diploma program?
Yeah, what's your, what's the current, I don't know, call it success rate, but what is the current, how can I say this? If 29 students start cohort one, do you keep those 29 students? Do we have that data? Do we keep 29 or can we drop off?
So, currently, we have eight students and all stu, eight students are in good standing and will move forward into second semester, and we will reevaluate. They do not get a nine-weeks grade. They are graded as college students are at every semester. So, we are pleased, but always have room for improvement with our students. It's a learning process for us all on how to improve and get them ready for the collegiate atmosphere and collegiate process. We did meet again with our college recruitment readiness counselors today and the early college team at Triton to continue to come up with ways to better enhance the student experience from onboarding through the end of next year. So, very fruitful discussions took place. Both Mr. Ashoff and Mr. Mohib were part of those discussions as well.
Yeah, just to add, this is the first year that our district has ever done it, so we don't really have a success rate yet, you know, because they're still like not even thoroughly quartered away through the two-year program. But when we initially had that orientation day last summer, the other schools that had started it a few years ago, they reported great success in having the program grow every year. So, I mean, if we're modeling it after the other schools in the area who are taking advantage of the Triton Dual Degree Program, it, it looks really good.
And they're done with the program, how far would they be from an associate's or are they going to get the associate's?
So, they will have their associate's degree currently in the arts or associates in the sciences. The way that would look for graduation for them is they would graduate one week prior to their high school graduation at Triton and receive their associate's degree. And then, President Moore would come over to Proviso Thompson High Schools and assist as needed with our board and our superintendent during the high school graduation. So, they would be receiving both of those within about eight business days. So, very pleased with the effort that I see from our current students. They take coaching very well, and we are looking at vetting the next group that's coming in, and we want to be able to bring this to scale either in '27 or '28 with a more permanent number. But we have to grow incrementally to get there.
If I may, would it be possible to get a cohort collective GPA?
Absolutely. I will make sure that you get that through Mr. Mohib's Friday reports as it is a group of students that is less than 20. Yeah. And one of the other positives is as we move students into these programs, plural at Triton, they have an opportunity then to loosen some seats and some of the scheduling that takes place within the high schools. And so, it's a kind of a win-win because you have some open seats to where maybe in certain classes before, students might have been oversapped by, you know, five or six seats, as we've all experienced in the past. Any other questions in regards to the dual degree?
Can you take us through the next slide around dual degree?
Yes. So, the first slide that you see here is our dual degree students by race and ethnicity. It is a almost photographic representation of the students as we see them in our hallways currently. So, 12.5% Caucasian, 37.5% African-American, and 50% Hispanic. To take a look at gender differences, 37.5 of our students are male and 62.5% are female. So, we are constantly looking at that data so we can give you all feedback. Any final questions on the dual degree? Okay, moving forward, so this information is coming to us in real time. We will have one more information item that you'll get through Mr. Mohib's Friday updates prior to making another announcement next month in regard to dual degree. Moving along to our dual enrollment courses, there are two types of dual enrollment courses. We have our career academies, and we also have our general dual enrollment. So, dual enrollment is again, something, and thank you to Ms. Barberin and Board Member Ocampo for allowing me to present twice, both in August and October, very fruitful for our community to hear about our programs and the differences. Both dual enrollment and dual degree occur on the Triton campus, and they're taught through the instructors that are employed at Triton. So, our students are there. We have a great group of coordinators and schedulers. So, when they put the core seats together, probably in October and early November, those went out to students, there were six of the programs on there that are currently the first six on this list. Since that time, Triton has added on approximately eight more programs with two more possibly coming. So, we've done an information blitz through our newsletter on Friday, and there are five more very intentional newsletters that are going out, both from the district level, Proviso East, Proviso West, and PMSA, that will afford students the opportunity to apply. So, thank you to Ms. Vandenberg, Ms. Hobbs, and Ms. Hidden for getting that information out, as well as the administrative teams. But we have added on HVAC. HVAC is only going to be for seniors. Our firefighting and EMT are also seniors-only. We have EKG, sports conditioning, sports management, our physical therapy aide, dental assistant, optician, barber, our confirm programs that are moving forward. Cosmetology is one of the programs that are a possibility for the future, as well as phlebotomy. And so, for our students that take CNA, for example, that is a semester-long class that's run as a stack. So, that is a Monday through Thursday class, where on Saturdays, five Saturdays, they do eight hours with hands-on experience. And we need for our counselors to schedule them for a second semester block, which would help give them another stack. Remember, stackable credentials mean they're earning multiple credentials in the same area to make them more employable once they graduate. So, we encourage that EKG or the EMT, and hopefully the phlebotomy will come along pretty quickly so our students can take that in semester one and then also in semester two and have that same block a timeout. Any questions surrounding our dual enrollment courses referred to as the career academies? Yes, ma'am?
Question. These are amazing, awesome, awesome. I'm very excited about these. But are these taken at night or these are during the day when?
So, the way they are constructed now is we have a block, we have two blocks within our current schedule that we're building. It's a 1, 2, 3 block and a 6, 7, 8 block. So, students would have the same AM block that they would have now, where they're picked up at roughly 7:00 AM at Proviso West. That shuttle runs down here to PMSA at 7:15 and then runs to Proviso East at 7:30. Students arrive at Triton at 7:45 AM, begin class at 8:00. They're picked up at approximately 10:00 AM and then returned to the schools. And then, new for next year is a PM route that will take place with the courses beginning at 2:30 PM and students being returned around 4:30 PM.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
For CNA, is that certified?
Certified nursing assistant.
They no longer have the LPM program at Triton anymore?
In general, they've done away with the LPM programs nationally because what they want you to do is get your CNA with the stackable credentials. So, again, if you have EKG, EGG, phlebotomy, and CNA, they can do all the things that LPM used to be able to do. So, they encourage kids to go straight for the RPN when they're finished. So, that's, that's kind of been a paradigm shift that's took place within the last four or five years.
I have a question. Why are some of the courses, well, except the rising seniors, are they not offered during junior year?
Yeah, so the rising senior courses, firefighter, you have to be 21-years-old, so they don't want to get somebody in. I have had success, and I'd like to continue to work through our superintendent, through our school board. So, we need your assistance with our mayors and those that lead our villages to talk about lowering the age of firefighters from 21 to 18. We've successfully done that in a couple of different communities that I've worked in, and that gives our students an opportunity to participate in the class at the firehouse, where I would special license the fire chief or one of their designees to help conduct the class and then give them an opportunity to be hired on immediately. Firefighter, also encourage that our firefighters get their EMT. I think in this area, the students, once they graduate, will start at around $85,000 with benefits. So, it's a really promising career with a lot of return on investment and very little debt that's taken on.
With that being said, you might want to start at Hillside.
I'm sorry?
With that being said, you might want to start at the Hillside.
Yes, sir.
And Joe is showing me a lot of interest in helping with the, these type of careers.
I'll make sure we make a visit. Any other questions? And as these come along, Triton is moving them as quickly as possible, but they have to work through the Higher Learning Commission, so we wish they were here in October, but we're going to keep bringing them in as quickly as possible for our students. Okay? So, moving on to the third action item, these are in reference to our dual degree students. So, we have our Triton voucher meal cards. Students are out at Triton five days a week. And with that said, what we didn't know going in is that Tri Cafe is actually independently-owned. They're not owned by Triton. So, in our initial conversations, Mr. Ashoff and I thought it was like, when we went to college, the kids would just swipe their own, and they were able to pay that way. So, the way it works is they, on Mondays, pick up a voucher weekly. And we, part of my sitting down with the students, we teach personal financial responsibility, so that gives them approximately $10 a day to eat. They, just from me monitoring them, they like lunch more than they like breakfast, so when they get there, they prefer to go to class and they have some time in between, where I'll set up in the cafe area. And they come up a conference with me, one-on-one in subgroups, and sometimes we do meet as a whole room, just for me to continue to encourage them and ask them questions and get feedback in real time, so I can discuss that both with Triton and with our team so we can problem-solve for them. So, as you can see, the cost is $10 a day for our student. This year, the total will be, and I always estimate a little higher, at $12,800, adding on 21 more students with 29 total, which takes us to $46,400. Are there any questions surrounding the Tri Cafe meal charge?
So, I'm just going to go back to the dual enrollment. You just added classes on, but we've always had dual enrollment.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, the other, and I, thank you for asking that question. The other type of dual enrollment that we do have is our, what we refer to as dual enrollment in general. So, we do have students, we had two, if you remember, we recognized last year from Proviso East. They were seniors. They had a full schedule and met all the graduation requirements. They had their own personal transportation, and they wanted to get a head start on math and psychology. So, they went over and took courses in the afternoon at Triton, and they were some of our recipients of the dual credit last year that we recognized in front of the board. And I want to say that collective GPA was just over 3.0 for all of our students last year, but they, they're, Mr. Ashoff asked the same question. Right now, there's about five or six students per year that take advantage of taking a general dual credit course. And so, we want intentionality and transferability and applicable to where they're going in the future. So, we don't want random acts of dual enrollment. We want to make sure we know that you know what you're going to be when you grow up, you have a plan, and that Triton's office has the final say on whether or not they approve that student-taking said course. So, we like them to stick to the basics as far as math, science, English, psychology, because those are freshman-level courses if they're offered. We want those students to start with those first. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That concludes our superintendent, my superintendent report.
So I see a bunch of information items. I don't know if you want to briefly go over those?
We can, at your preference. Otherwise, we were going to do all the approvals and then we would end with the information.
Okay. No, we just do the information. Or did you want to do the? Yeah, maybe just go. Okay. Yeah, just maybe one minute. Information. I believe you talked about these items before. All these information items. Am I in the right one?
Okay, so we're going to shift here and go down to item number 17. And so these are new items that have not been brought to the board before. The intention here is to just give a brief overview to the board for each of these items and they will come back next month for approval. So the first one would be the school year 25, 26 calendar.
Good evening, Board. The 25, 26 calendar that you have in front of you as an information item is something that was made in collaboration with each of our foundation's school superintendents. Both Superintendent Mohit and I previously kind of calibrated with those, with them to ensure that those calendars are in alignment. Just actually yesterday, speaking with Dr. Hassan, just to make sure she was going through her calendar in District 89, making sure that they were in alignment. Some of the key differences that you'll see here, we've talked with a number of our community members, a number of our parents and our students. The first item you'll see is different there is on August 11th, we have a freshman orientation. So this is something that we have not had the past several years, but it is something that has been requested and we've listed. So that's something that we'll be reinstituting back is that freshman orientation day. Another key change that we've again heard from our community is around our parent conferences. Parent conferences historically, we've had just 6:00 to 8:00 PM, which makes it a little difficult for some parents that do work at night or just want to get to each one of their teachers. So you'll see key differences there at the end of quarter one and quarter three where now it's going to be a full entire day where parents can, depending on their work schedule, whether it's the morning or afternoon. And we're also currently exploring kind of scheduled visits, whether it's virtual or in-person, to allow some more structure, but we now have the time and capacity to do that. Short of that, we have that, again, that full week in Thanksgiving and our number of professional learning opportunities for our teachers and our staff throughout the calendar. But short of that, that is the information item for your consideration and then we'll be looking to move it as an action item for next month. Are there any questions?
School starts awful early.
Actually, I have Michael Swanson to discuss staff and student laptop purchases.
Good evening, Board. This is our usual yearly purchase of student staff laptops. One thing to note, last year we purchased 1,458 devices. This year, 1,300. Last year, we wanted to make sure we utilized all of the Acer funding that was available. This year, Acer funding is not available, so we'll be using local funds. We've received one of the quotes so far for the laptops that actually came in cheaper. Right now, the savings are around $14,000 compared to last year's purchase. So keeping the boundaries extremely competitive and working towards that purchase for the upcoming fourth year.
What's the total?
So the?
Eight hundred eighty-six thousand, right?
I'm sorry?
Is it 886,590?
That was the purchase, that was, let me see, what?
Oh, that was the last year.
That was last year. So this year for the student staff laptop purchase total, and this is going to fluctuate because of the warranties. They quoted the wrong warranty, but not much fluctuation, 794,000. Thank you. Yeah, no problem.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Swanson.
Thank you.
I'll take the next one. And sorry, and this is the press, the policy press with 1/7. And just wanted to be able to provide this to you and to make sure you had this information, but know that we will be meeting, but Vice President Dixon will be leading the Policy Committee. That will be on January 27.
Yes, we meet the last Monday of the month, so if you have been working.
So after we have those meetings, then we'll bring you back for first and seventh meetings. Okay, sorry, Alan. Dr. Ashoff will now take the next item, which is the PMSA transfer.
I agree.
Sorry, giving away doctors.
Working towards it. All right. So again, another information item here, the Math and Science Academies admissions and transfers. So again, some background here, our Math and Science Academy opened in, gosh, 2005. All right. And since that inception, students apply and their admissions, if you guys, if you're listening, admissions window closes tomorrow. If you're going to apply, make sure you apply. But with that said, students historically to this building have only been able to come in as ninth graders. They apply, go through an application process, and they're admitted in as ninth grade and they matriculate up 10th, 11th, 12th. But no student in any other grade level is allowed to enter into Proviso Math and Science Academy. Again, several years back, we expanded the Math and Science Academy admissions and kind of had what I'm just going to call a school within a school at Proviso East High School and Proviso West High School. What we see from year to year, and it's kind of covered in that information item, is that occasionally students will transfer out of this building, whether it's moving out of state, whether it's just moving out of this city location in our township to other areas. And we have open seats. And through talks with board, looking at that opportunity of potentially filling then those open seats and allowing students to apply in underneath that same application process, but allowing 10th graders, 11th graders, or possibly 12th graders into the Math and Science Academies. So you have a detailed plan in that information item, something that to take a look at and read it through on what that looks like and kind of just looking for some feedbacks and direction if this is in line because it was mentioned at last meeting for this to be brought back in as an information item. So looking if there is any discussion or anything read through on that board memo from our members here.
I just want to understand that so we're talking about kids from Proviso East Math and Science Academy and Proviso West Math and Science Academy being able to transfer into PMSA if they meet the requirements?
That would be one scenario. Or if a student isn't even in the Math and Science Academies and maybe they are attending another school but moving into the area, that would be another opportunity. Yeah, if they are.
Does that also, sorry, does that also cover kids who might be homeschooled or go to like private schools or anything, so just any other school or?
So yeah, it would be designed that if the student is within the Proviso footprint, then that would be an opportunity for them to apply.
Okay. And then what about kids, if places open up in the East and West Math and Science Academy is putting kids in those spots as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so throughout the entire NSA?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So I want to make sure that I hear you. To transfer in, it's transferring into the Forest Park campus or you're transferring into Math and Science Academy on Proviso East, Proviso West campus?
Well, so it would be an opportunity to apply into the Forest Park campus or into the Math and Science Academy's program at Proviso East or West?
Because that's not what I have known people to want to do, transfer into East and West campus. One, because they say that it's not the same thing that it is in Forest Park. So I'm trying to understand this transfer. I know I've been talking about this since 2017, the transfer in and talked about Whitney Young, Walter Payton, and you know, places like that. But it sounds like you can't necessarily transfer into PMSA, Forest Park, Roosevelt If I'm an East student and I have, from what I was reading here, I'm an East student, let's say I've taken physics, should need physics, right? Should need 25 credit hours. And my sophomore, I didn't get in my freshman year, but my sophomore year, I want to transfer in, you get 12 seats open at PMS Forest Park, PMSA Forest Park. I can transfer into Forest Park if I meet everything that you could ask as far as grades, completing physics and things like that. Or does that mean that I can choose between PMSA, Proviso East, or PMSA? Because that's not what I'm hearing community say, I want to go to PMSA and Proviso East unless.
So what we're bringing here is the policy that was brought to you for consideration. When we have brought this back to our team, as we've looked at this, we've realized that we need a little bit more time to develop what the policy will be because we, I don't believe we've heard from enough of the community. And so I think at this point, like as we're letting the board know that this is something that we're interested in figuring out, but I think there will be some changes to this based on what we hear. So the plan is to kind of put together a task force with something that moves a little bit faster than a task force to hear from parents and community members and from students and teachers to understand, you know, what is a fair policy? Should students be able to transfer out of PMSA if this, if the transfer is only to be able to graduate?
See, and that's my next question because that's been happening here, right? Right as we speak.
Right.
If they don't cut the mustard and they're only at 21 or 22 credits, you're finding a way to transfer them out so that they can meet the graduation requirement. That's not right?
And that's what we want to explore. And then also the conversation around, you know, East and West will do a phenomenal job of enriching a child only to then lose them because of position performance. So we have to balance this because we have to, you know, we have to consider what it does to a school community, but also what the needs of the child and the desires of the family are. So this is not a topic that is easy by any stretch of the imagination. I think that's why we've been talking about it for so long. But I do want this board to know, we're committed to continuing to have this conversation. And there is a, there is a real chance that we will not be ready next month for a sense of policy. And we may come back to hear more conversation from this board. We may come back with some more ideas. But essentially, what we want to make sure that we do is when we do decide on something, it's something that this entire community can agree around or at least feel that they've had the time and opportunity to voice their input on what this policy should be.
I agree.
It's a tough one.
The next information, 17E, is titled Academic Tutoring ACT Bootcamp. So I've come before you a number of times talking about this transition from the SAT to the ACT. Earlier on in the school year, we talked about partnering with Horizon and Horizon was our practice ACT test. And those scores have now been delivered to parents electronically via email and given to students. That came about from a partnership that we had with teachers called our Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee. And part of that committee during the summer took a look at a number of different opportunities to partner with different individuals around the ACT. That's how we came to Horizon. And part of that vetting process, we also came across a company that we have used in years past called Academic Tutoring. Academic Tutoring, the reason we didn't partner with them specifically on the practice test, they have a wide variety to be able to serve many different needs and kind of customize specific opportunities for our students. Something that we heard last school year was about that boot camp opportunity. It's not something when Mr. Provona and I looked, it came in early February, we're looking at that, it was just a little too late to get in a boot camp opportunity, but look exploring that for this school year. So I want to thank our principals and their administrative teams worked very closely with the vice president, their Uval Trachtenberg, to kind of design and customize around an opportunity for a boot camp for 100 students. And those principals and their admin teams are working very closely identifying which students are then going to benefit from this boot camp opportunity, which again, depending on the schools, whether it's after school, whether it's during school, or even on the weekend. And that's kind of outlined a little bit more in the specific accompanying supplemental documents that you'll see for each school on how they designed this opportunity and customized it to best fit their needs.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Mr. Rashaf. Next, we have Mr. Taylor.
President, Vice President, Secretary, Board Members, colleagues, community, good evening and Happy New Year. Starting off with IGS, IGS is Interstate Gas Supply. The main reason we would like to engage in conversations on an action item next month for IGS is to do stabilization related to pricing for terms of gas, natural gas, and also KW kilowatt for electricity. It is forecast that electrical rates will go up tremendously in the next few years, obvious reasons, EV vehicles, the grid is over capacity, and we would like to get ahead of this and make sure we have stable pricing related to electricity. On the third side, it is not anticipated to go up astronomical, but because of COVID, everything else has gone up, wages, there is a slight increase and we have engaged in conversation with IGS, which is a brokers firm to give us a snapshot of what the market looks like related to energy. And we want to make sure that we have stable pricing to forecast out for Dr. Hill and her team to make sure that we can pay our bills. This work began starting in 2017, 2018 with administration at the time CFO Paul Starkey. And we did see a substantial favorable amount of dollars stay within the Proviso footprint. And we are working with Sam Lewis, who is an independent contractor at IGS, to provide a forecast dollar amount of what that savings would look like for two to three years out if the superintendent board would like to move forward with the action item. Any questions around IGS? Yes, ma'am.
No questions, just a comment. Having experience though at the county, I would just, along with the rates of kilowatts per hour and?
Thank you.
Yeah, make sure that, I'm trying to remember what gave us the most issues, but the different taxes that are on top of those, make sure that you have that factor into the cost because it, sometimes it's almost like the savings, you know, the taxes offset the savings or sometimes, so just make sure you're getting the full picture.
Yep.
Before we sign anything.
So we agree. And to add to that, we do intend to still use our suppliers that we have now. We're not going to go around NICOR and get a secondary supplier whose NICOR is going to still charge, discharge us to use their infrastructure. We're going to do the same thing with ComEd. We're going to make sure we stay with ComEd as a supplier, but we're just going to pre-purchase the energy.
Does it include any like offset rates?
Yes, both positive and negative. Positive aspect to it is that we can forecast and can't put a certain, for example, the last time we signed an agreement, it was about 19 cents of KW. There was communities and school districts around here paying about 33 cents a KW. So that price alone with the building this size, you can, you think $8,000 extra a month on the electrical bill. So Proviso did have a favorable amount stayed within the district. And we're going to work with Sam Lewis, who is a representative at IGS, to make sure he gets the proper numbers for Dr. Hill and her team to review and also give them to Mr. Mohit to review before we do add anything in stone and make sure we work together as a team to make sure we get the best value from Proviso. Any other questions about IGS? All right, moving on to Johnson Control, which is JCI in your package. JCI provides essential services related to all of the building components in the kitchen, our fire alarm system to notify all the first responders to make sure that they can get here on time, all of the field devices, heat sensors, smoke sensors. all of the field devices, heat sensors, smoke sensors, to make sure that the active responders can respond to the fire department, get them here in timely. If there's a defective device, those devices are under warranty with the exception of water damage and/or just physical damage. I believe that pricing in totality for all three schools is about $119,000 per year. We did sign a one-year agreement last year. But JCI has performed very well in the last 12 months, and I'm in favor of doing a three-year contract related to keeping the price the same for the each three years to make sure that they stay on track. And the representative, Mrs. Elliott at JCI, she's understanding the challenges that Proviso went through with JCI during COVID, not having proper inspections on time. They were low in manpower, so we've been working really hard with them to challenging them to be their best related to providing us the best service. And as we speak, they are doing a great job. And I believe that price is about $122,000 a year. And we will be presenting an action item with Mr. Mohib's approval for a three-year versus a one-year like we did last year. And I did include the whole contractual agreement within that information item. Any questions about JCI? All right, great. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And our last information item will be around staffing for summer school.
Okay, around summer school, I want to thank Mr. Valente, Ms. Moreno who is here as well, and Ms. Roch who couldn't be here tonight, around planning and preparing for our summer school opportunity for our students. So you'll see, this is a similar information item that was brought to you earlier in order to make sure as an action item, one thing that we've promised the world to be very close at is those failures to ensure that the money that we're asking and investing for is exactly what we need. So you'll see a similar information item, and then as it becomes an action item, we're just going to ensure that the number of students that we're anticipating are meeting the number of teachers we are requesting. Great. Thank you.
All right, that concludes all of our information items. Know that all of these information items will become approval items in the consent agenda for next, at next month's meeting. And throughout the course of this month, I will be providing additional information through weekly board updates to prepare us to make the decisions and provide you all the information you need before making that decision.
More, based on these information items, I was thinking, I don't know if it's possible, their information items, but one of the reasons I ask, you know, that you bring them is for the community to know what's coming the next board meeting. Is it possible, since we get these information items in our board packet, is it possible that we could bundle all these information items and link somewhere and just put a QR code in front of the desk here everywhere where they sign in? And if anybody has questions, any board member has additional questions during the meeting, it's just to streamline the meeting if there is, you know, the community has access to this information and don't know why. So we could just streamline and just pass through those if you guys want. Yeah, they're on the agenda, so I'm saying if you, you know, if you just put the QR code and if anybody has questions and wants to see what they are, or if we have additional questions during the meeting, we could go ahead and ask them, just to streamline the meeting, I'm saying, that's all.
So we could have, we could have the action items, or sorry, the information items listed as they are, and then we could just see if there's any questions. And then if there's a question, then we'll have someone present on. Otherwise, you have the information.
Right, but at the same time, I want that QR code, so any of the audience, community members can just scan it, and they'll have that as well.
It's also on the agendas though.
But not everybody knows.
Yeah, we can look at some.
I know.
It's a better way to.
Like somebody that's never came to a board meeting and doesn't really know the process. It's just to be more transparent, see if you want it, if you don't want it.
We think school districts will also, part of the communication strategy is post-year, you know, last year origins, right? When we get it on Friday, when it goes live, we'll just ask people to go and look at the website, but send the website to them, send it out. Yeah. I feel like that's easier than a QR code.
I just worry that, you know, you want them to have the information that we have. That's all. So whatever works.
Okay, we'll look at some strategies to get this information out there. We don't have to try anything here, we'd love to get more and more people aware of what's happening in the district.
Great, thanks. But with that being said, I guess, don't have much to say, just, you know, Happy New Year to everyone. Happy Prosperous New Year. It was very touching today with, you know, Dr. Tamara Holmes and her family, how they, how she came, how they came and then kind of remembered what she did. It kind of, it kind of makes us reflect on what we could be, right? What we should do and what dreams we have, what hopes and dreams we have that we could accomplish during our lifetime. To be honest, I never thought that I would be here speaking to you guys and being a board member in the community that I grew up, you know, in the schools that I went to. So on top of that, you know, that's, it's just something that every new year I think about, you know, what's next? How am I doing with, with my purposes here, here and on this earth, right? So it was very heartwarming to see the family come and remember her. But not even that, because, you know, we all do that at a funeral, right? Or when somebody passes away. But Dr. Tamara Holmes really did accomplish a lot. I had no idea, you know, those photos of her next to the helicopter with the young kids, you know, it's really impactful. It really is, and it just makes me think of, you know, where am I, where am I? In regards to what, how I want to impact this world and my personal things that is probably not even the school part. There's other things that actually I've learned throughout these seven, eight years that I've been here that I've been able to do and that nobody knows that I do unless, you know, one day you show up to my funeral, right? Then you'll know what I did and what I do and what I loved to do. But with that being said, you know, growing up in this community and, and sometimes, I'll be honest, I do feel tired of, you know, coming to the board meetings. But then when I show up and I see the great things that are happening, now that I don't, you know, I have the responsibility of overlooking with my fellow board members, because I'm only one vote, right? It feels great to see the work that's being done. And I'm not just saying it just to sound good, I'm just saying it because I'm looking at it, right? We're really impacting the students, I was really impacted with the, I wish they had that when I was here, right? You know, the dual, the dual, not dual enrollment, the dual degree. It's just awesome, you know, and I wish we could do more for kids. So I encourage those people that are watching, those people that really care for the community, that live in the community, to get involved, you know, as the community, these students, these kids, they really give us the energy to actually do what we do, to be honest. Because we don't get paid for this, and I'm not complaining about it. But honestly, I do get tired, but when I come here and I see all this, I'm like, you know, I'm just glad I came. So with that being said, you know, it just helps us build partnerships and commitment, right? If you're not committed to doing something, I always tell my kids, if you start something, finish it. Don't start it and just leave it at that, but you have to start what you finish. No matter if you're last, just finish it, right? So that's, that was my commitment for this board, that's why I run this time. And I'm just so glad that we were able to accomplish so much. And I'm just glad for my board members here that, I don't know, I just feel a lot of harmony with them and a lot of peace. And I thank you, board, and I thank each, each one of these board members for what they're doing. And yeah, that's it. It's been great this year. Will be an awesome year as well, and, and you know, there's, everything's new, new opportunity. Everything's here for us to be successful. We just have to come together after, before and after, but most importantly, after. You know, even if you're from this group, that group, they just come together and accomplish great things for this district, and especially for our kids, so that's all I gotta say. Happy New Year, Ken. Thank you. Okay, great. As we jump into the approvals. May I have a motion to adopt the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on December 10, 2024?
So move.
Second. Jenny, please call the roll.
Mr. Alexander, absent. Ms. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson? Absent. Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Balthieris?
Aye.
Ms. Barbanen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I have motion to approve the bill list submitted to the board and dated January 14, 2025 in the amount of $3,516,162.36.
So move.
Second. Jenny, please call the roll.
Mr. Alexander, absent. Ms. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson, absent. Ms. Grant? Mr. Balthieris?
Aye.
Ms. Barbanen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I have a motion to approve the January 14, 2025 personnel report including the hiring, resignation, separation, staffing positions, and leaves of absences.
So move.
Jenny, please call the roll.
Mr. Alexander, absent. Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson, absent. Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Balthieris?
Aye.
Ms. Barbanen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I need to pull two things from your consent agenda.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry, can I please pull 16C and 16D?
Second. 16C and D, okay. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda to include the following agreements and expenditures? Minus 16C, try and do all degree courses as Y26, 168, and 16D, try and voucher me of cards, $46,000.
So move.
Second. Hold on, sorry. So that was minus those, right? But including best placement test purchases, $155,948, try and do all enrollment courses, school year 26, $95,400, terminations of employment of athletic and activities director, Cyrus McGinnis affected immediately, action to accept the resignation of Wesley Cobble, Coordinator 1, Information Systems. Jenny, please call the roll. Or discussion, sorry. No? Oh, we're gonna go on those separately.
Yep.
Correct.
This is for 16A, B, E, and F. Mr. Alexander, absent. Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson, absent. Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Balthieris?
Aye.
Ms. Barbanen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda to include the following agreements and expenditures. 16D, C, sorry, 16C, try and do all degree courses, school year 26, for $168,000.
So move.
Second. Discussion.
Discussion, I'm in support, but I need to obtain the raise.
Mr. Alexander, absent. Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson, absent. Ms. Grant?
16.
Mr. Balthieris?
Aye.
Ms. Barbanen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda to include the following agreements and expenditures. 16D, try and voucher me of cards, $46,000.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Alexander, absent. Ms. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson, absent. Ms. Grant?
16.
Mr. Balthieris?
Aye.
Ms. Barbanen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Great, thank you. We've done information items. All right, great. Jenny, can you please read the fore?
Yes. Proviso Township High School District 209 received the following FOIA requests. On December 7, 2024, Isaiah Nolan requested a copy of my son Isaiah Nolan's old immunization and medical documents. Response provided. On December 9, 2024, Tatiana Walker requested payroll salary payments for all security for the year of 2023, 2024 for Proviso East Security. Response has been provided. December 10, 2024, Tim Bates requested, I am investigating an auto accident that occurred near the intersection of First and Madison, near the southwest corner of Proviso East High School. I am inquiring if the school would have any video footage of the accident. The accident occurred on 12/6/2024 at approximately 10:45 PM. The response was provided. On December 11, 2024, Mary Janice requested, she is requesting the following information for your district's malfunction copiers, multi-function copiers, sorry. Right, printers and print management software, the current multi-function copiers, production copiers, printer lease, purchase contracts, and terms and conditions, the current multi-function copier, production copiers, printer maintenance contracts, and terms and conditions, and the current lease service invoices relating to items above from the past six months. That response is in process. On December 20, I'm sorry, December 30, 2024, Sherry Reed requested SmartProcure is submitting a commercial FOIA request to the Proviso Township High School District Number 209 for general purchasing records from 3/14/2023 to the current request date of 12/30/2024. That response is in process. That concludes FOIA.
Any old business? Here none? Any new business?
I request that the Triple I 2024 shareout happens in February 4, please.
Okay, we'll put that up.
If that is okay with everybody?
Sure.
I do have one item to share, so I will be at the Township Treacher's Office Quarterly Meeting tomorrow, which starts at 11:30 in Berkeley. Just a wire. And I will be sharing my findings with the board and at next month's meeting.
Is there anybody else? Do you want to add anything?
No.
Just you?
Just.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody else? Any business? Here or not? Jenny, please call the rolls in here.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
On the paper.
On there?
Aye. Aye. Thank you. 9:55. Thank you.
Absent.